Good evening, Wakefield. I hereby call this Town Council meeting of May 22, 2023 to order at 7:00 p.m. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Item Three, attendance. We've got a split group today. Here in the studio, we have myself, Counselor Dombrowski, Counselor McLean, Counselor Smith-Galvin, and Counselor Vincent. Oh, it looks like we've got Counselor Danahy and Counselor Butt on Zoom. Can you both hear us?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item Number Four. So typically, we do public participation next. However, after discussion last time on our public participation policy, we wanted to start the meeting with a continuation of that conversation. So, Mr. Mullen, would you like to kick us off for that, please?
Yeah, so after your board recklessly disregarded my sage advice, which was to abandon the public participation policy in toto, I have done the next best thing and tried to implement the changes that you did authorize in the public participation policy that's before you. Some ministerial changes were made. References to the Board of Selectmen were replaced with references to the current Town Council. But more importantly, in the numbered Paragraph One, I took out the statement that abusive, defamatory, or remarks deemed by the Chair as personal in nature will not be tolerated. These actions will be ruled out of order. Persons engaged in such conduct will forfeit their remaining time, or if necessary, be ejected from the meeting. And replaced it with, persons who choose to speak during the public participation segment must behave in a peaceable and orderly manner. This, of course, was in order to comply with relatively new SJC precedent. Also, we took out some other language that your board asked to be removed, sort of unrelated to the SJC case. And I'd ask that you vote to adopt this new public participation policy in the place of the old one.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move to accept the public participation policy as amended.
All right. Move, my Counselor McLean. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. Any discussion? Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Shines. I actually have two motions to amend. I'll start with the first one. I move to amend the proposed public participation policy by removing the words "not less than two-thirds" in the seventh sentence of the paragraph labeled "one" and substituting the words "the majority."
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on the motion. So the motion is to, and this is in Section One, change the threshold by which the allotted time for public participation can be increased from a vote of two-thirds of the council to a majority, so four votes instead of five. Any discussion? Counselor Vincent, I don't know if you have any context you want to share.
Yeah, if I may, thank you. I'm no mathematician, but to achieve two-thirds with the Town Council, seven requires five votes. Five of seven is actually 71.4%, which is closer to three-quarters, 75% than it is to two-thirds, 66.6%. And I also note that the initial paragraph of this public participation policy states that the Town Council will institute measures to increase citizen participation and to encourage citizen input. Seems to me that it's reasonable for a majority of the Town Council, vice five out of seven members, to decide to increase the allotted time for public participation because that would increase citizen participation and encourage citizen input if a majority felt that was necessary.
Any other discussion comments? Counselor Dombrowski?
I guess the only question I have is, is there a reason that we couldn't also just have it as the Chair's prerogative, Mr. Mullen?
No, I was thinking that you could. The sort of obvious stopping points would be a majority, which is the motion before us, some kind of supermajority, which is in the current draft, or just leave it to the Chair's discretion.
I agree with you, Counselor Vincent, that it shouldn't be a supermajority, certainly. But I don't know if we could put, or perhaps, Mr. Mullen, could we put a simple majority or the Chair's prerogative and just give us both options?
So it would be the total time allotted for public participation may be increased by a vote of the majority of the council members present or in the discretion of the Chair?
That makes, that's reasonable to me.
It feels more complete, I think, maybe?
Okay. Yeah, sure.
So Counselor Vincent, so should we consider that an amendment to your motion if there's consent from the body?
Sure. That's fine.
All right. So the motion is to read, "not less than the majority of the council members present or at the discretion of the Chair." Other comments? Counselor Danahy or Counselor Butt, anything from afar? So hearing none, the amendment that we have is to change the wording from "not less" to "two-thirds" to "not less than a majority or at the discretion of the council chair." We'll take a roll call vote on the amendment. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself as aye as well. So the amendment carries seven-zero. Counselor Vincent, you had a second motion?
Thank you, Chair Shines. God, I'm getting good at saying that now. The second one is, I move to amend the proposed public participation policy by adding the words, quote, comma, "commissions," end quote, in the third sentence of the paragraph labeled "two," immediately after the word "committees" and immediately preceding the word "departments."
All right. Sorry, we're in Paragraph Two, just a, oh, there, I got it. Prepared by boards, committees, commissions, and departments. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, I apologize. I should have given you a chance to explain.
This is purely for completeness purposes. Chapter Nine of the Wakefield Bylaws is entitled Boards, Committees, and Commissions, and that's how we label the different volunteer boards that we have. But this draft policy just says boards and committees. In Wakefield, we have, among others, the Commission on Disabilities, the Conservation Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the Recreation Commission, and the Historical Commission. So just to make sure that all of the volunteer groups that we have, whether they're a board, a committee, or a commission, we should probably have all three of those terms contained in the policy documents since they are contained in the Wakefield Bylaws, Chapter Nine.
Other discussion? Counselor Smith-Galvin?
But we're keeping departments, right, as well?
We keep departments.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Just departments would be.
I want to make sure, yes, that there's any staff.
That's why I just inserting the comma, "commissions."
I just missed that in the initial.
Mr. Mayo?
Respectfully to Counselor Vincent, do you also want to add councils? Because I believe the youth council has a different designation for some reason.
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging. So I think that would be more, and it would do what you're trying to do.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. There's councils as well.
Right. So I can't make a motion, but I would suggest that.
So Counselor Vincent, again, any objection to amending the motion to change that sentence to, background data shall be prepared by the boards, committees, commissions, councils, and departments concerned prior to the scheduled appointment with the council insofar as possible?
Yeah, that would be appropriate. Thank you.
All right. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Dombrowski?
Mr. Mullen, would you rather an and slash or there? Or would you like it better as and?
Yeah, that would make sense, and/or.
Because there could be multiple of them. You're right.
Counselor Vincent?
That's fine.
Okay. No other objections to that change, to the amended amendment? All right. So then again, the amendment would change that sentence in Paragraph Two to, background data shall be prepared by the boards, committees, commissions, councils, and/or departments concerned prior to the scheduled appointment with the council insofar as possible. So we'll take another roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself as yes as well. So seven-zero, Sheri. All right, on to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion as amended? All right. Hearing none, again, main motion is to adopt the modified public policy, public participation policy as presented. Another roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes as well. So seven-nothing, the amended policy carries. All right. Item Five, speaking of public participation, Sheri, do we have anyone?
What was that?
I don't know. Do we have anyone for public participation tonight, Sheri?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any public participation tonight.
All right.
So Tom, that is what you have for all.
Well, for tonight, anyway. All right. Item Six, Proposed 40B Development on Nahann Street. Mr. Mayo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on May 8, we did have a site visit at 119 to 135 Nahann Street to talk about, or to be presented, I should say, a potential 40B project there. Now, that 40B project consists of six stories, 120 units, I think is projected or presented to be eight feet away from the right-of-way, and basically utilizes the entire lot. At that meeting was Counselor Marine Butt, Counselor Mike McLean, Counselor Ed Dombrowski, and Counselor Bob Vincent. Also was a member of Mass Housing who kind of sets up these meetings. And this is the way the process goes. Whenever there's a 40B process presented in town, it first goes to Mass Housing. Mass Housing is then through kind of a data collection period and wants comments from the community prior to issuing their eligibility letter. So we did have that meeting then, and a lot of questions were asked. There were also many department heads, the police, fire, DPW, myself, Erin Kolkinder, our economic development manager was there as well, and really kind of to get introduced to the project. At that meeting, we were shown the building, and there were concerns based on the massing of the project being six stories high. The request was made, could we have a massing plan to show how that would fit in, you know, and would affect the neighborhood? And, you know, that was probably one of the biggest issues, the lot coverage and things like that. I will tell you that, and then we went away, and I fully expected the petitioner to be here today, which was what they had requested for a date, which is why we scheduled the site visit. I'd like to have the site visit first, if possible, for the Town Council comments. Apparently, Mass Housing needs, is asking for some additional looking at the project. And so I imagine that there will be a revised plan of some sort going back to Mass Housing. I don't know what that will be. And the petitioner requested that we move this to our next meeting on June 12. So the petitioner will be back or should be back on June 12, along with another 40B on Nahann Street, which is a little bit further towards Main Street. My feelings on this and things that we'll be looking at, we will be looking at, traffic is an issue there on that street. We will be certainly looking at how this affects our infrastructure, water, sewer, there may be some strains there. I'm not going to get into the site and how that affects the area, but I think the massing plan will show that. It is putting a lot of coverage on that lot and how that would really affect the whole area. Was interesting that Mass Housing asked for a kind of a reset or relooking at this. In my experience, and I haven't, you know, done many of these, I've never heard of that happening before. The other item that I would like to point out is that, you know, Wakefield is a housing choice community, and I'm going to say that, it's been long enough now, designated by the state. And we have made, as a community, great strides in providing an atmosphere that has led to the creation of a lot of housing and of a lot of affordable units. We are very close to our 10%. I think if everything in the pipeline were built, we would be at 10% now. When the census changes, when the new numbers come in later on, we'd be just short of that. So those are items that I'll be looking at and gathering information for as we go forward and as we go back to Mass Housing with our comment letter. We will be requesting from Mass Housing a extension on that letter. That will be certainly granted because they asked for the change to stop. We didn't do anything to stop this. In fact, we're here talking about this as we promised. So not a lot of information yet, but there will be a full presentation or a better presentation from the developer on the 12th. And that's kind of in a nutshell what happened.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just add to what Mr. Mayo was saying, that this, for those of us who toured the site, this is not the project that belongs on that site. It is way too large in scale. I mean, many, many stories high, very large. There's virtually no green space. I mean, a very small sliver of green space. It's a lot of asphalt and a lot of parking. It doesn't fit at all with the nature or character of that section of Nahann, certainly. It would, I think, dramatically change the entire area. We saw a lot of traffic going by, and that's without all these vehicles coming in and out. It's on a very kind of upward part of Nahann Street. And the closeness, like you said, it would be road, sidewalk, and literally a few feet, and you would have this massive structure that goes back an incredible distance. I know a lot of residents have reached out about this project, understandably so. I think everyone watching should know that we are committed to making sure that we follow this project to, and the entire process. We will have the opportunity, as you said, Mr. Mayo, to submit our concerns, and we plan to do that. I'll speak for myself in saying that I am adamantly opposed to the project as it's currently presented, and I suspect others may share that opinion. But we will have our opportunity to present before Mass Housing those objections. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayo, these projects are oftentimes not asked to be tweaked, to my understanding, the same way.
Right. I've never, in my experience, I've never heard it happen at this level. Of course, when it goes to the Board of Appeals, there's a lot of changes then, but prior to getting there, I haven't seen that happen.
And I think it was nice to have all of our department heads. It showed a unified front, and everyone looked at it from a different perspective. Fire was talking about the ways in which the trucks coming in would be compromised based on the design. We had DPW, or a town engineer was there, police there as well. Police had a lot of concerns that they had expressed, so it was good to have everyone present. I think it was really important that you brought everyone together in that way. But this is, I think, a long way from being a project signed off on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
I would just add to those comments, which I agree with 100% that when the town administrator talked about eight feet, we are talking about eight to 11 feet right on Nahann Street.
Right.
And straight up. And I believe the parking spaces, as originally proposed, were somewhere in the neighborhood of 163, hence no green space. And we're all familiar with Nahann Street. We know how much is going to be going on at the other, at the high school end of Nahann Street and how much already the community there deals with in terms of traffic. And we've heard about it prior to this project. We've heard about the traffic in school buses and, you know, the problems on Nahann. It is a very narrow road. And I totally agree with Counselor Dombrowski. This is something we're going to have our eyes on.
So certainly more opportunity to comment on this on the 12th when they, when they're here. Mr. Mayo, I know we have the other proposed development on Nahann Street coming on the 12th as well.
On the 12th as well.
Can you remind us when the site visit is for that?
And that site visit is, let me check on that. You know, when you get my age, you don't remember.
I think it's the first.
The first? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, June 1st.
So first at 1:00.
So, you know, certainly as we look ahead to that meeting, just a reminder to any residents in the area who do want to, you know, attend and sit in on our Town Council meeting, that'll be the next meeting, June 12. On a related issue, Mr. Mayo, do you know when we get the census data in terms of our denominator for the 40B calculation?
Well, I know the number. I don't know when.
I mean, we don't know when it's, like, signed and sealed.
I don't know when it's going to be set in stone.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
But it's in all the 40A reports, which is interesting. They just haven't, you know, put it out yet. And I think it has something to do with how housing units were counted, seasonal units down the Cape.
Okay.
But I don't think that really affects us here at the time, so.
No.
But it is an interesting dynamic.
We don't have a lot of beach houses.
No, we don't. Might be the next one. Not yet. Not yet.
All right. Counselor Danahy?
Hi, Chair.
Oh, yeah, Counselor Butt? Oh, sorry, I missed both of your hands. I apologize. Counselor Butt?
Thank you. I know. Thank you, Chair Shines. Just a reminder, I don't know what's easier, to raise hands or just try to catch your attention. I agree with all that was said. I also just wanted to remind everyone, my colleagues and members of the public, that we shortly will have the master plan coming out, and I think it's really important for us to be mindful of these reports and really do a coordinated effort. So it was great, Steve, that so many members of your team came out and kind of, you know, that they're ready to add what they thought, including the chiefs, including the economic development person, including the town engineer. But I think it's really important for us to be mindful of master planning and maybe an update, Steve, of when that's going to be finalized. And then also, you know, Counselor Smith-Galvin is sitting on the 40A working group. And I think it's just really important, as we have these reports coming out that people have spent so much time on, that it's coordinated and we're really strategic about it going forward. And we're really looking at you, Steve, about kind of, you know, having those all presented to us and to the town in a timeline that we can use all that great data that we have and all that great resources as we make these decisions about upcoming development happening in town.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Danahy?
That's a very good counsel. I agree with all the other points that were made as well. I was wondering a little bit about process. I had read something that it said that being an inclusive, having inclusive zoning will, is something that we can put into our letter to the state, and how does that weigh in?
I can answer that.
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we do have inclusionary zoning that we voted in 2015.
Right.
And that, because of that, we have supported the creation of a lot of affordable units and a lot of new market rate units. So yes, that is, will be part of our submission as how many have been created in the last few years, which was the same thing we presented to the state to be Housing Choice Committee, Housing Choice Community. We've created a lot of units. So that's part of the, that's part of our cover letter going to them, what we have done to create housing. You know, we haven't set up two-acre zoning everywhere and not allow any housing to be built. It's quite the opposite.
Right.
I think we should be very proud of the work we've done in creating housing.
Absolutely.
That'll certainly be proud of our submission.
Yeah, and I just hope that, yeah, and we should be really proud of the work that we've done, and I hope that the state is as well, and that we get credit for all the hard work that we have done. Also, I just want to raise the point that it's not just an issue of traffic on Nahann Street. It's a safety issue, so I hope that the Traffic Safety Advisory Group does get involved in it as well because I know that there have been historically issues with speeding on that road, and we have a lot of new drivers driving down that road, so I don't know if that can be taken into consideration, if there's any data that we have about, I don't know, traffic incidents that can be included into the report.
And actually, the Traffic Advisory Chair was at the site visit, so he's aware.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Great. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Just along those same lines, we also have reports from the Saferidge School along Nahann Street, so we should make sure that that's included as well.
Any other discussion? All right. Well, more to come in three weeks. Item Seven, outdoor dining. Mr. Mayo, this is you as well.
Thank you. This is me as well, yeah. As the council may recall, that earlier this spring, I think at the end of March, with a few days to spare, or we'll see what if we wouldn't be able to have remote meetings, the state legislature did extend a lot of the pandemic policies, and they extended through 2024. Part of that was for the remote meetings to be able to continue. And part of it was to allow outdoor dining from the perspective that zoning and liquor license were not affected during the policy. So we've embraced this over the last few years, and you've seen a number of our restaurants, Sapetino's, for instance, coming to the town, setting up in front of their shop, brings a lot of vibrancy. And there still are people that I run into every day, not every day, but often, that are still timid about going into a restaurant. So it really does help a lot of people. Not, I mean, I love eating outside, and I think the vibrancy is great. So we did talk about this. A number of the businesses still want to continue this for another year. So I would like, as we did last year, to allow my office, along with the Emergency Management Director and the Health Department, to, you know, issue these licenses like we did before. I think we'll see fewer because I think that frankly, some of the businesses are having trouble staffing up, but that's fine. But I do think that this was a good, has been good for the last few years, and I think it'll continue to be well. So that's, I'd like that consideration tonight.
Mr. McLean, do we have a motion?
We do. Chair Shines. Motion to authorize a town administrator with input from the health agent and emergency management director to approve alteration of liquor license and food service footprints for both public and private spaces to allow retail to enter the public way, provided access is sufficient, and require uniformity of barriers.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Great discussion. Counselor Danahy, but any, sorry, the little hand icons are very far away from where I'm sitting, so if I miss you, I apologize. Any initial comments from either of you?
Strongly support it.
So, agreed. I think we all enjoyed this. I think the one thing that I'm going to say that I think I've said for a couple of years is I would love some shared spaces for restaurants that aren't tied to restaurants, but that, again, you know, Greenwood Parking Lot in the summer or other places where we could do a bunch of picnic, you know, or park lets where we have something that maybe isn't tied to something, you know, as recently in Portland, Oregon, on the West Coast, and they're everywhere, and it's so great, and they have performers that you can watch as you eat your ice cream or drink your, you know, have your meal. I really, I would really love some thought about places we could have some shared seating.
Thank you. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I absolutely second that. I know I've been asking for that for a couple of years, and this might be the perfect opportunity. If all the restaurants are not going to come back.
We have some of them.
We have supplies. So I don't see any reason why we couldn't use those to cordon off. And it doesn't have to be right on the main streets necessarily. It might be, you know, Albion, really a great way to showcase the new work that's been done on Albion Street. So I definitely, I think it shouldn't just be restaurants who have clientele that get to enjoy the outside spaces. The only other thing, and I know I say it every year, is please don't give any licenses to any restaurants that are not in compliance with rules, including styrofoam and plastic rules. Thank you.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I think the other piece of this, too, is, and I think the motion kind of reads this effect, talks, mentions retail. We focus a lot on restaurants, which I think is important, but, you know, in the past, we have the history of sidewalk sale and those sorts of things, so being able to encourage[1761.29] so being able to encourage other businesses to maybe have an outdoor presence, I think would be great, like, the more we can do, the better, and also, I wonder what we can do to try to, to make sure that we're getting the word out, perhaps the chamber can send out an email blast to their folks, and we can maybe do in other ways, because I'm not sure that all businesses necessarily are tuned, I'm sure most businesses watch this meeting, right, I mean, who doesn't watch these meetings? But for the few that might not be, just so, so people know, because I'd like to be able to, to make sure that people are aware, I know Kid Casa did some great stuff at Albion as an example of that, you know, it's not a restaurant, but it's, but it's activity, so other ways we can think about how to engage other businesses too, so it's, it's an even more robust experience for people that are, that are coming into town, and who knows, they might notice a business they didn't even know existed, you know, that, that has an outdoor presence, so I think across the board, and Erin Kokinda, I think, would be instrumental in reaching out to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Mayo, do you need a separate authorization for a parklet, or is the sense of the council sufficient to move ahead with that?
Well, I'll come back and give you the locations, but.
Perfect, okay, maybe we can agenda that for an upcoming meeting. All right, seeing no other discussion, the vote is on Counselor McLean's motion to allow for outdoor dining as presented, roll call vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky?
Aye.
And myself, yes, 7-0. Great. Item eight, we have a couple of lagging liaison updates from last time, Counselor McLean, if you want to take it away?
My apologies.
No worries.
Mr. Chair, briefly, Council on Aging spoke with Karen Burke, who's working and recovering at the same time from a broken leg, and everything is going very well over there, I, I don't have much to report except for good news, newsletters are out, all of the activities are up, and everything's going fine over there. Commission on Disabilities, they, and also one other thing, Council on Aging is interested in the ultimate master plan and was inquiring as to where we were on that, I think a lot of the seniors are wondering, are we going to make the town a little more walkable in some ways? But, back to Commission on Disabilities, they have two prime focuses right now, employment and housing, both of which are not easy answers. They, you know, there was a closing, Biddy and Bo's is in 12 states, they were in 13, they had a, an outlet in Melrose, and 25 individuals lost their very important jobs when that closed. Some individuals in the Council of Disabilities are involved in perhaps seeking a, another location, and it would be in Stonem at present that they're primarily looking, if you know any great space, I'm sure they'd be, Wayne Tullock in Wakefield as well. And relative to housing, obviously, there's always a concern that some of our individuals who will never make enough money to buy a home, probably because of the amount of wages that they're going to get if they are employed, need a place to live, and that's something I hope we can all just give some consideration to, if we, if we have any housing projects where we might be able to be inclusive in that regard, and that's, that's the updates.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayo, I don't know if Erin Kokinda's been in touch with the folks that are working on the Biddy and Bo's relocation?
She has been in touch with Biddy and Bo's.
Okay.
I don't know if that's the same person.
Okay.
I can, I can put her in touch with the, the friends.
Okay.
About to be friends, yeah.
Great. All right, any discussion or questions for Counselor McLean? All right, seeing none, item nine, licenses, Mr. McLean, do we have a motion related to Wakefield Bowladrome?
We have a motion to approve the Boeing Alley license.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will say, given that the Bowladrome has attracted two feature films to Wakefield, I mean, we got to make sure they keep operating.
Oh, Maureen, George Clooney's going to be there this weekend.
I don't believe you, Steve.
All right, well, seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky? And myself, yes, 7-0.
Talking about movie credits.
All right, that's right. All right, next, Counselor McLean, Lakeside Tavern?
Yes, we have a motion to approve the pool table license.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky?
Aye.
And myself, yes, 7-0. All right, the library in Plaza Jazz, Counselor McLean?
Yes, we have a motion to approve the entertainment license for Plaza Jazz.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Other than just general excitement that Plaza Jazz is coming back? All right, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky?
Aye.
And myself, yes, 7-0. And finally, Arinab Sellers?
Yes, we have a motion, Chair Chines, to approve the liquor license for the farmer's market for Arinab Sellers, for sales purposes, only excluding sampling because of our policy here in town.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky?
Aye.
And myself, yes, 7-0. All right, item 10, we have a vacancy on the Wakefield Municipal Lat Gas and Light Commission, Mr. Mayo, I don't know if you want to share some context for this?
Certainly, whenever there is a vacancy on other elected boards, there is a joint meeting of the town council and the other board to fulfill that, that position, because it's an elected position. We did have a resignation, Phil Corsi is moving out of town, or has just moved out of town, and his vacancies, and he leaves our light commissioners with four as of May 16th, 2023. I think Phil was a very valued member, person of that board, I, I worked with him on, on the undergrounding of the power at the head of the lake, he was very much involved in that as well. So we do need to have a joint meeting with that board, it is our, our board's policy, or history anyway, that we do advertise, we advertise in, online, we put the, put story in the newspaper to get people to call, to put their, their names in, though the, we're anticipating having that run through June 9th, which would give plenty of time from today or tomorrow, when they see it in the newspaper and online, to get their applications in, in a very successful form, we use it for all of our committees, so it's actually pretty streamlined right now. I believe the light commissioners are meeting on June, do you know the date, Cherry, they're meeting, light commissioners, I think they're meeting the week before us, so they will, yeah, they'll have time to review them, and then they'll come here, we will have a joint meeting on the 26th, normally, the receiving board makes a recommendation, if they have one, and then it's really a roll call vote and majority rules, so we've done it a number of times, a little bit clunky, but it does work, so that's what we'll be doing here, if the board so chooses.
Is there, thank you, Mr. Mayo, is there a motion to advertise for a permission on the municipal gas and light commission with applications due June 9th?
Yes, a motion to advertise for a position due to the resignation for the unexpired term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky?
I would, distinguished, thanks to Mr. Corsi for distinguished service to our community.
Thank you, and myself, yes, and likewise, thank you to, to Phil for his service, I know we'll, we'll miss him and miss both his service and also having him in town. Fortunately, I don't think that he's far away, so hopefully we'll, we'll see him play pickleball again. Item 11, warrants, Counselor Vincent?
At 7:40 PM instead of 10:00 PM, okay, three warrants, warrant number.
Do we need to push you to the back of the agenda just so you're a little closer?
I was very surprised to see how far up it was, warrant number 40 is 3.153 million dollars and change, the most significant part of that was Light Department, 1.5 million, warrant number 42 is 8 million 375,901 dollars, the big ticket items on there were the Light Department, 3 million, group insurance, 1.3 million, and Public Works, 1.3 million. The last warrant is number 44, that was for 4 million 460,955 dollars and change, Light Department was 1 point, almost 8 million of that, significantly, the town council was 1.1 million, and I talked to Mr. Go on this, 496,000 of that was the public safety building, the other 626,000 of, of that, 445 of that was actually for the new Wakefield Memorial High School for design development, so we're going to start to see money being spent on the new high school now. That's all I have, Chair Chines.
Thank you very much, any, any questions for Counselor Vincent? Seeing none, item 12, donations. Counselor McLean, do we have a motion?
Yes, a motion to request and accept, and to, motion to request, to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the Council on Aging in the amount of 125 dollars from various donors with thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Demersky?
Aye.
And myself, yes, that's 7-0. All right, item 13 is a state funding request letter related to the community media programming bill, I don't know, Ryan, would you like to speak if you have the opportunity?
All right.
You realize, see, we have no, we have no one to film you now that he's stepped away from the camera.
I know.
The classic example of the wrong side of the camera.
Thank you so much, I'm going to let Brian handle most of the talking here, I think.
So just to kind of put all of this in context, this is the third session that the streaming bills have been introduced, Senator Lewis has been involved in all three of them, and the last two has been Representative Joan Machino from Hull, and so, for various reasons, it hasn't passed in previous sessions, but questions have come up about the impact, what would the dollar impact be? So, late last year, Rep Machino went out and collected some national facts about streaming households that stream, interpolated all that down into Massachusetts, came up with a rough estimate of what those fees might be based on JD Power surveys, and the rough estimate for 5% of gross revenues for streaming companies would be about 65.2 million dollars. So that's 65.2 million dollars would be allocated based on 20% going to the state's general fund, 40% going to the local municipality, and 40% going to the cable access stations. The key thing about the last two is the municipalities and the local cable stations are based on population, but if you take 40% of the 65-plus million dollars, that number is about 26 and a half million dollars, that would be 40% that would come to the towns or to the stations. If you divide it by the number of cable access stations in Massachusetts, 264, give or take, on average, that'd be just shy of $100,000 to each station, but, again, it's based on population, so, you know, if Wakefield ended up right at the average, that would be a rough guess of what, not only what the station would get, but what the town would get. So that's where that is, so what happened is, we talked about this with Senator Lewis, Ryan and I, he was in for a Beacon Hill update last September, and we were talking to him about it, and he suggested that we reach out to MMA, which we did in, we also did that in September, I think, almost right afterwards, we had a Zoom call with Jackie Lavender Byrd and Ali Di Matteo, talked to them about it, and reiterated to them that the bill is important for the municipalities, so they've asked us to keep them in the loop, which we have done, as have several others, I'm certain. So that's where it stands now, the reason for the rush on this was that Mass Access, who's the trade group for the cable access stations in Massachusetts, wanted it by June 1st in the hopes that the committee will hold a hearing in June, and they'd like to have some background information about not only coming from the stations, which we're going to submit public comment, but they would like the towns to step up as well too, and, and voice their support for these bills, so that was really the reason for it, and, you know, if you have any other questions, those are Ryan's, basically.
Great, thank you, so, so just to clarify for the council, the, the request is to have the, the town council and the town administrator send a letter of support for the bills on behalf of, of WCAT, is that, that's correct, Mr. McCougar?
That's correct, yes, yep.
Any, any questions or, or discussion before we proceed to a motion? Counselor Smith Galvin?
I would just add that I'm sure that they would also appreciate public citizens doing letters of support, or anybody in our community who benefits.
Absolutely, yeah.
The schools, the parents who get to watch sports on it, so this is not just a town council left, though we will certainly do it.
Absolutely, and I will say that Senator Lewis, obviously, from the beginning, has been actively involved in this, Representative Lippard Garabedian has also co-sponsored, but Senator Lewis and Rep Machino are also on the joint committee that's going to handle this, and interestingly enough, so is Senate Minority Leader Bruce Tar, who signed on as a co-sponsor and is on the committee as well, so it has support of roughly netting out people that endorse both bills, just about 45% of total legislators have co-sponsored, so, but anything from the public would be greatly appreciated.
And, and to your point, I believe, you know, we, we had, we had similar, similar requests last year and the year before, actually, and, and the public, you know, did come out, they did write letters of support, and it was greatly appreciated, so I guess all I can say is, until we can get this thing passed, we're going to need it again.
All right.
So from all of you, thank you very much, and, and to the public who might be watching and listening, we need their voices as well, absolutely.
And, Mr. Boyd, where, where can the public find more information, is there information on the WCAT website, the Mass Action website?
Yeah, great question, I'm going to actually look at Brian again, because I think he has a little.
We can, we can put it on the CAT website, I think.
Yeah, we can, we can link to it.
And link to the, link to the bills themselves, I mean, they're not, they're not brief, there's a lot of detail in there, they're whatever, 13 pages each, I think, almost identical, the Senate version and the House version are almost the same, so, yeah, we could put that up on the, on the site and just give them a contact piece that way, and we can also highlight in our press releases.
Social media is as well, absolutely, so I would say, check our page tomorrow, and we'll, we'll have everything there for you.
Any other questions, Counselor Demersky?
Just wondering, so if, if you're, you're saying the average is about 100,000?
Based on, based on some rough assumptions.
Rough, rough assumptions.
Yeah.
Do, can you remind us, the decline in revenue over recent years, how does that compare? Basically, how much does the 100,000 rough make up for what has been, you know?
It's a great question, so, so for now, the 100,000 would cover the yearly difference, but not for that long, you're looking at it for the next two, three years, that'd probably cover it, and then after that, assuming the gap would, you know, of revenue from cable comes in and prices and everything else go up, we're going to see that shift a bit more.
And was, what, what was the rationale behind dedicating 20% to just the state's general fund?
Believe that that's the same formula for the peg fees, for the public education government channels, I, I, it's not based on population at that point, but I believe the general fund gets some as well, because they have to do all the tracking of how the funds are coming in, how they get allocated, so the state does have some expense built into, just from a personnel standpoint, I think.
Thank you.
I might just add to your question to what Ryan answered, one of the issues that's also come up related to this, and it's a whole different subject, but just so everyone knows, there's also been proposals to extend, you know, the hybrid meetings, and actually, you know, codify those, and so those two bills are out there as well too, so some of the smaller stations are saying, with that, it's going to be difficult for us, you know, WCAT has, has five employees, but some of those smaller stations have one or two people, how are they going to accommodate? How are they going to accommodate that? So, to your point is, it will cover it for a period of time, but the more that the, and everybody agrees, hybrid meetings are awesome. You know, the cable companies do, sure all you do, the public does, but there is a cost associated on this end, too, and the stations are concerned that there'll be some difficulties. So, how long that money goes before, you know, it makes a big difference? It will replace what's lost, but it won't necessarily make up for what has to go forward.
I guess the same question for the 40% going to the municipality, what was the thinking behind that as compared with, say, for example, 80% going to the station?
That, I think, is the same, Steve, you may know better from, but I think the town gets a portion of those peg fees as well.
The peg fees go to the schools and the, and WCAT.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I am not quite sure the rationale. I do believe it's to help sort of sweeten the idea of supporting this, what, you know, state's going to get a certain amount, municipalities are going to get a certain amount. And so, I'm not sure exactly where the numbers came from. They could very well be based off of other examples that are happening in the country, you know. This is not a radical idea. This would, we would be about the 15th or 16th state to pass something like this. And so, you know, they are, they are taking sort of motions from other, other states, other cities that have done something similar, and I think sort of seeing what worked for them, what makes the most sense here in Massachusetts, or how to, how to make it happen here.
It just seems a little bit diluted, in that it's 40 cents of every dollar, and if the legislation is truly meant to support cable access stations, I'm confident that our municipality would direct the funds, you know, to this station, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily a given everywhere, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Danahy?
Yes, all great ideas. I think that, you know, this is, this worries me, is if this doesn't pass, because I think that the services that the cable access channels provide to local municipalities is really vital to our democracy, as well as to bringing our community together by showcasing some of the things that we do in town. So, I would encourage the public to write letters, and I would say, if you could put on your website, make sure you include where they can send those letters, and the names of their representatives, state senator, and, you know, Jason Lewis's, and Cait Lippert-Garabedian, and the, you know, everybody that they can send it to. Anybody that that can be sent to, I think, is really important.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's worth reminding folks that are watching us right now, that, I mean, we are, you know, on your computer screen or on your television because of WCAT. You know, if you, if you watched the Wakefield Warriors football team win the Super Bowl this year, you were watching that on WCAT. So, it is a resource that certainly is important to all of us. Any other, Counselor McLean?
Just one other point, I know the local paper has a what's on CAT pretty regularly. Have you discussed with them the possibility of maybe getting a front page, just a short, what we're talking about here, here's what we need, and here's who you write to.
I'll talk to my guy, see if he can make it happen.
Talk to your guy.
And again, just to be clear, what we submitted was, you know, you should feel free to edit that if you want. All we'd ask is that whatever you send, if you decide to send it, Ryan gets a copy, because we will file that when we file our public comment as well. That would be great.
So, to that end, is there a motion to send a letter of support for the legislation?
Yes, a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to pen a letter on behalf of the Town Council and the town, seeking support from the legislative bodies to modernize funding for community media programming, and in support of pending streaming bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, seven to nothing, Sherry. Great, well, thank you very much, and good luck, and certainly hope that, hope that our support really tips the balance on this one.
Thank you.
We'll send that out, Doc, you sign.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And if we don't do the letter, our lighting next meeting is not going to be very good.
I'm telling you, I'm still not in favor of the HD, though.
We're putting that, let them be slipped in.
That's true. We want to be filmed in dreamscape. All right, item 14, approval of minutes. Is there a motion related to the May 8th site visit minutes?
Yes, a motion to approve the Town Council site visit minutes from May 8th, 2023.
Second.
Great, any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, seven zero. And is there a motion for the May 8th Town Council meeting?
Yes, I move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes from May 8th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Counselor McLean, seconded by Counselor Dombrowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
Aye, yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you. Item 15, any announcements? I'll start with our, our remote folks this evening. Counselor Danahy or Counselor Butt, anything on your ends?
Yes, I, people have been talking about the master plan, and I just want to let everybody know that our consultant is in the process of analyzing all of that data. It will hopefully be ready mid-July, and it's going to go through two processes. There will be submitted for public comment, public can, it'll create a draft that the public will be able to comment on and provide input, and then the next process is that there will be a joint meeting between Town Council and the Planning Board for our input. So, we're getting very close, and I'm very excited about, I'm very excited about getting it started and hearing the findings, and then implementing.
Thank you, and just for the council's interest and public interest, I think we are tentatively looking at July 10th for that master plan update for the council. Counselor Butt, any, any updates or announcements on your end?
I don't, I'm all good, thank you.
In the room here, any announcements? Counselor Dombrowski?
I would just remind everyone that we have Memorial Day celebrations coming up this weekend and into Monday. The Westside Social Club always does a fantastic job of honoring the fallen on Monday at 10:00 AM, I believe, and then at 1:00 at the Galvin, of course, is our Memorial Day ceremony, with a very special keynote speaker as well, and that's always a great ceremony. Want to also remind folks about the Senior Night fundraiser. It's a really important fundraiser. It's, it is a substance-free event, so seniors can have a safe, fun, really a blast, at Dave and Buster's following their prom. You can go online, you can, if you're on Facebook, just type in WMHS Senior Night, you can go to my own Facebook page, I have a link to it. I noticed that it, since last night, it's gone up another $300, so they're getting closer to their goal. But, literally, any amount that you can contribute, be it, be it $5, or $100, or $1,000, any, any amount really makes, makes an impact there, because that is a, it is a great event, and it's so important, you know, to make sure that we have our seniors safe and enjoying, you know, the last days of, of high school. So, please support that. Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Quick reminder, 5:30 tour tomorrow for the municipal building improvements, and Wednesday is the FOQ Annual Dinner at the Bear Hill, approximately the same time.
Great. Counselor Smith Galvin?
Just a quick update from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, there is a tour of a MRF, and for those who don't know what a MRF is, it's a material recovery facility. Next Wednesday, the 31st, at 4:00, there are a couple of spots left open. We are going up to see the Greenworks Material Recovery Facility, which you've probably passed on Route 1, it has the big, I don't know, there's a statue, but all the trash coming out of it. So, if anybody's interested in going, they can reach out to the Environmental Sustainability Committee or myself, and I can put you in touch.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you. I have two Memorial Day events that take place before Memorial Day, and they're both on Friday. So, Friday at 9:00, Wakefield Memorial High School has its annual Memorial Day Assembly at the Fieldhouse, and they encourage all residents, especially veterans, to attend that. And then, in addition, Memorial Day flags are going to be placed on Friday at the Forest Glade Cemetery at 3:00 PM. Boy Scout Troop 701 and Girl Scout Troop 62842 will be there to assist in planting the flags. And today at 3:00, prior to this meeting, the flags were placed at Lakeside Cemetery, and I had the honor of going over there. And it is very inspiring, as a veteran, to watch the youth of the community, boys and girl scouts out there, understanding the significance of planting the flag, paying attention to where to put the flag, and just taking a moment to reflect on the sacrifices that people made in the honor of our country. Very much enjoyed going over there today and interacting with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo, Mr. Mullen, Ms. Dalton, any announcements? Just a couple of things to add. I know Counselor Dombrowski mentioned the Westside Social Club ceremony at 10:00. The town ceremony at the Galvin Middle School is at 1:00, so please, please join us for that as well. Oh, you did mention that, I apologize.
Sorry, just reinforcing it.
Exactly, it's really exciting, maybe it was the time that I missed. Just a couple of thank yous in town. First of all, I did want to express our thanks from the council to the Wakefield Fire Department for their work in containing and putting out the fire in downtown Wakefield at the building where Charlie's on Main is. I know we've commented in a couple of other settings, that's an incredibly tight area, and the fact that the damage was contained to one building and didn't spread to, to others. I mean, if you look at everything that's around there, that's really an incredible feat. And so, as always, very, very grateful for the Fire Department and their work and their bravery in making sure folks are safe. Did also want to thank, you know, our town, including our Communications Director Jen McDonald, for the town annual report. If you haven't received your copy, they are online, or you can pick up a copy at Town Hall. Just a great compendium of information from the last year, if like me, you are a municipal government nerd, or if you aren't like me but still are interested in what's happening in Wakefield, a really sort of well-put-together report. And I do want to recognize, the picture on the cover is from our new sign at Veterans Field donated by Lois and Dan Benjamin, and we have a picture of Lois with the sign, which is great to see. Every time I go by there, that's a nice addition to the town, so thank you for that. And then finally, just wanted to mention, before our next meeting, the Festival by the Lake is coming up on June 10th, so another great, great event, and thanks for WCNA for putting that together. Maryne, I see you've got your, your hand up, sorry, Counselor Butt?
Sorry, just one more addition that I forgot, as I looked at my calendar. I think we announced it at our last meeting, but just a reminder about a future event, the Wakefield Human Rights Commission will have their progress flag raising on June 1st at 5:00 PM at the American Civic Center. Always a great event, hope to see everyone there.
Great, thank you. Counselor McLean?
And one other that I, I don't believe we have mentioned, that on Memorial Day we'll also have the police-
Thank you.
Memorial service for fallen officers, I believe it's 10:00 AM, at the, at the municipal building.
All right, item 16, matters not anticipated. Mr. Mayo, I understand we have a license.
Yes, we do have one. We would like a one-day liquor license for the happy hostess at your service, and this is for the Chamber Bowling Night that I think we took third place in last year, the Town Council team, but this just came in over the weekend, and the liquor, the liquor license event is on Thursday night from 4:30 to 8:30, and luckily, the hostess, happy hostess, has already been fingerprinted this year, because they've done other events in town. So, luckily, that had already happened, or else we might be not so happy hostessing this event. So, we will make sure that in the future, that the Chamber gets this in a little bit earlier to us, but I do think it is a fun event, and unfortunately, I think I have a meeting that night, but this will allow that to go through, and it's a really fun event for the Chamber. So, we feel everything's in order for the one-day liquor license for that.
And just to be clear, Mr. Mayo, if it hadn't been that the applicant happened to be fingerprinted recently-
It would be an issue, yeah, it would be an issue, yeah, yeah. We probably wouldn't have gotten that back.
Great. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Chamber Bowling Event and the happy hostess.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, that's seven zero, Sherry. Any other matters not anticipated? Counselor Dombrowski?
I know that we had received the other day, Ms. Dalton sent us a letter about a flag request, is that, are we, are we dealing with that?
So, it's not on the agenda today. It can be on the agenda for the next meeting if so requested.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure, because we got the letter, but there was no-
No, we, we did get the letter after the agenda was put together.
Okay, all right, so we could just do the next one, then, because I think the flag is what, the 14th?
Correct, yeah.
So, that would be fine.
Yep, we can put that on for the next meeting. Anything else for matters not anticipated? All right, seeing none, item 17, adjournment. Our next regular meeting is Monday, June 12th at 7:00 PM, and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? No. We'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes, that's seven nothing. So, we are adjourned as of, as of 8:07. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us. Thank you, Counselor Danahy and Counselor Butt, for joining us remotely, and we will see you on the 12th.